Furthermore, the bill seeks to provide guidance and governance on the railway safety regulator.
Vader, het doel? Jullie wetzons waarop het doel is om die regering en de beheer van de reguleerde daar te stellen?
And to address concerns raised over time by operators in respect of systems of railway safety.
En om kwesties waar deur op een operatier is geopperd is met betrekking tot spoorwegveiligheid aan te spreken.
The bill also seeks to remove perceived conflicts of interest.
Een werk om opgemarkte potsting van belangen aan te spreken in die weg te rijden.
And to provide a flexible framework for managing railway safety.
En om een buigzame raamwerk te skippen om spoorwegveiligheid te beheren.
So I'm just quickly going to go through some of the clauses.
Zo ga ik nu vluchtig over sommige van die clauses praat.
So clause three lists the objectives of the bill, including the primary objective of enabling railway operators to undertake safe railway operations.
Zo klasse drie noemde al ze die oogmerken van die doel vooral ook die van op een paradeers onveilig is spoorwegveiligheid daar te stellen?
Clause four makes for the provision of the Minister of Transport.
Klaas drie vier heet te maken met de minister van vervoer?
May approve exemptions as regard to the application of the act.
Met betrekking tot uitsonderings tot die wet?
Clause five, six and seven has to do with the administrative part of the bill.
Klaas drie vijf, zes en zeven heet te maken met de administratieve delen van die wet?
Clause nine provides for the railway safety regulator is governed by a board.
Klaas drie negen heet te maken daarmee dat die spoorwegveiligheidssreguleerder beheer wordt hier op raad?
Which oversees and exercises general control over the performance of the railway safety regulator.
Wat oorslag biedt voor de algemene prestatie van die reguleerder?
Clause ten makes provision for the composition of the board.
Klaas drie tien heet te maken met de samenstelling van die raad?
Clause eleven regulates the appointment of the board members.
Klaas drie elf heet te maken met de anstelling van raadsleden?
After a nomination and selection process.
Na nominatie en verkiezingsproces?
And the minister appoints the board members and informs parliament of the appointees.
En die minister maakt dan uit die anstelling en stelt die parlement een kenis van die wat angesteld is?
Clause twelve makes provision for the appointment of the chairperson and deputy chairperson of the board.
Klaas drie twaalf heet te maken met die voorzitter en dat jong voorzitter van die raad?
Clause thirteen determines the term of office of the board.
Klaas drie dertien bepaalde amstermijn van die raadsleden?
And also the minister and the board must annually conclude a performance agreement which amongst others must include provisions for a board evaluation.
En die minister en de raadsleden moet jaarlijk zijn prestatievergadering heen waarin de raad oor dit wat jij het genoemd wordt en wat bereik wordt?
Clause fourteen describes the functions of the board.
Klaas drie vierteen heet te maken met die functies van die raad?
Clause sixteen makes provision for board members resignation and notice period.
Klaas drie zestien heet te maken met die bedanking en kennistijperk van raadsleden?
Clause seventeen makes provision for meetings of the board.
Klaas drie zeventien heet te maken met die vergaderings van die raad?
Then we go on to clause twenty one which empowers the minister to dissolve the board under certain circumstances.
Klaas drieentwintig waar je ons nu springe heet te maken met hoe die minister die raad kan ontbinden indien daar zekere omstandigheden is?
The clause twenty two regulates the appointment term of office and discharge of the CEO.
Klaas drieentwintig heet te maken met de aanwijzing van zekere ampte en ook die ontslag van die oefen uitvoerende rekening of amtrouw?
Then we skip to clause twenty seven.
Dan gaan we eens oor naar klasse zeven twintig toe.
Clause twenty seven provides for the funds for the railway safety regulator and.
Klaas driezeven twintig heet te maken met de fondsen van die reguleerder?
In addition to the funds voted by the parliament and fees payable in respect of railway safety permits.
Benevins dit wat hier die parlement daar gesteld wordt en onbeschikbaar te maken gemaakt is voor spoorwegveiligheid?
We go to clause thirty.
Nu gaan we eens naar klasse dertig toe?
Makes provision for the processing of applications for safety permits.
Dit heet te maken met die proces van die aanzoek voor veiligheidspermitte?
And the processes thereof.
En die processen wat daarmee te maken heet?
Clause thirty one makes provision for conditions subject to which railway safety permit may be issued.
Klaas drieentwintig heet te maken met die voorwaarden waarin daar voldoemd wordt voor een veiligheidspermit om uitgereikt te worden?
Clause thirty three.
Klaas drieendertig?
Determines the process for the surrender, suspension or revocation of railway safety permit.
Klaas drieendertig heet te maken met die opgehen en opev en cancelatie van een veiligheidspermit?
Clause thirty five.
Klaas drieëndrieenvijfendertig?
Provides for the evaluation of training institutions.
Heet te maken met de evalueren en registratie van opleidingsinstellings?
The railway safety regulator must evaluate prospective training institutions which have applied.
Die reguleerder moet die instellingen wat aanzoek gedaan is hiervoor evalueren?
Clause thirty six provides that the minister.
Klaas driezeshenzendertig heet te maken met dit wat die minister moet doen?
Despite any other legislative or regulatory instruments prescribed a railway safety standard.
Tenspijt van alle andere dingen in plaats met betrekking tot die veiligheidsstandaarden van die spoorweer?
Then we go to clauses forty two to forty six.
Nu gaan ons naar klasse drieëndveertig naar zeszesentwintig toe?
Clause that deals with the powers and duties of railway safety inspectors.
Dit heet te maken met die macht en de verplichtingen van spoorwegveiligheidsspecteurs?
Clause forty seven describes the power of a railway safety inspector.
Klaas driezevenveertig heet te maken met die macht van die spoorwegveiligheidsspecteren?
To deal with unsafe conditions.
Om onveilige omstandigheden te anteren?
Clause forty eight describes the duties of the operator.
Klaas drieachtendveertig heet te maken met die verplichtingen van die opereers?
Immediately after a railway occurrence or railway accident or incident.
En die verslagduing wat moet gepaard gaan direct na de daar o- ongeluk of een gebeurtenis was?
Clause forty nine places an obligation on an operator to report a railway occurrence to the railway safety regulator.
Klaas drieentwintig plaatst verplichting op die opereers om verslag te doen van een gebeurtenis na de dat gebeurd is?
Clause, we jump to clause fifty three.
Nu springen we eens naar klasse drieëndvijftig toe?
Which empowers the minister.
Waar die minister bemachtig?
To request the president of the republic.
Om die president van die republiek te vragen?
To appoint a commission of inquiry in terms of the constitution if he is or she considers necessary to do so.
Om een onderschotcommissie daar te stellen om zekere zaken te onderzoeken indien dit nodig is?
Clauses fifty four to fifty six.
Nu klasse drieëndveertig naar zeszesentwintig?
Provides for an appeal mechanism against decisions by an employee of the railway safety regulator.
Heet te maken met de appelproces en enige persoon wat angesteld is als deel van die spoorwegveiligheidssreguleerder?
Clauses fifty seven and fifty eight.
Klaas driezevenveertig en achtendvijftig?
Provides for the offences and penalties.
Heet te maken met oortredings en strabbe?
And clause fifty eight makes provision that an employer or principal.
En klasse achtendvijftig heet te maken met die oortredings met betrekking tot werkgever of principal?
Is liable to conviction for an offence if an employee or agent of that employer or principal commits such an offence with an express or implied permission of that employer or principal.
Een is gerechtig tot vaderen stappen in die geval van de oortreding deri werkgever of deri principal of enige van de lagende?
Then we go to clause sixty.
Nu gaan we eens naar klasse zestig toe?
This empowers a court to inquire into harm loss of damage caused by a railway incident.
Dit bemachtigt die of om nauw vraag te doen met betrekking tot enige verlies wat iemand geleid als gevolg van een spoorweginzending?
Clause sixty one.
Klaas drieënzeszegste?
Deals with the minister's general power to make regulations.
Heet te maken met die ministerse algemene macht om regulaties daar te stellen?
Clause sixty two.
Klaas drieëndzeszegste?
Provides for the minister to make regulations regarding the design, construction, manufacture of rolling stock infrastructure and stations.
Heet te maken met die macht van die minister om regulaties met betrekking tot de ontwerp en de constructie en die veranderen van nieuwe operaties en infrastructuur?
Clause sixty seven.
Klaas driezeven en zestig?
Authorizes the minister to prescribe a scheme.
Bemachtig die minister om een schema voort te stellen?
Whereby railway safety inspectors may issue compliance notices.
Waardoor die inspecteurs voldoeningskennisgevingen en strabbe kan opleiden?
Of minor infringement of railway safety standards.
Met betrekking tot geringer oortredings van spoorwegveiligheid?
And clause seventy and seventy one is basically the repeal of the National Rail Safety Regulator Act.
En klasse zeventig en dertig heet te maken met die vervanging van die nationale spoorwegveiligheidssreguleerder wet?
Okay, thank you very much. That's an helicopter overview of the bill.
Nou goed paar dankjewel dit is een oorslag zoals helikopter oor hier die wetzons waarop?
I will now take hands for the first round of inputs from you, the community.
En de nauw vraag aan de neem of voor die eerste ronde van incident deri die publiek?
Let me stand so I can see hands. So let's start on the left. Can I have some hands?
Laat ik opstaan, we beginnen die lankerkant?
Maamje, nummer één, nummer twee.
Nummer twee?
Anybody else on the left?
Nog iemand aan die lankerkant?
Nummer drie?
Nummer drie?
On the right hand side?
An die achterkant?
Four?
Nummer vier?
Five?
Vijf?
Six?
Zes?
Seven? Anybody else? Let's take those first seven hands. Just a reminder, you can speak in any language. We will translate as far as we can go. So ma'am, you can start the proceedings.
Niet herinneren je je kompat?
Assia, come from Hanover. My concern is that there's a railway going past Hanover, but there's no one employed from Hanover. They're coming from DR and Hanover, Noport, but we want to know that. How do we not get any job because it's a railway passing from Hanover? They are fixing the railway now, but no one in Hanover is working there. We're seeing the bus entering and going out, but we don't, no one from Hanover is working there. It's people from DR and Noport. How do they do our job? Because that's our bread they are taking. Exactly. So that's why I want to know that. Where do we have to apply? Because everything is done in DR. Everything is done in DR, DR, DR. That's DR. And I'm not saying what, anything else, but Pixie Casem is not built by DR at the first place. It's built by many, many towns. You understand? So but the one thing is that their only concern is DR. We're also having a mayor and a councillor in Hanover, but we never know about that. She's supposed to be here. She's not here. You understand? And then she's supposed to know the in and out of Hanover, but she's not here. And she doesn't even concern us. Everything is all about DR. We're also having a community hall in Hanover, in Noport, in Brixton. All of us are having community halls. Why does everything have to happen in DR? So I want one thing is that I don't want DR or to blame anyone, but the concern is that the railway is passing by Hanover and we are, no one of us is even getting, no one is employed there. We're seeing the buses getting in and out, in and out. And how are we supposed to feel? Because we're unemployed in Hanover. So I want to know because I want to be the next train driver. Thank you.
Thank you very much. When you come to the podium, if you represent an organization or a councillor or you represent, can you just state that when you state, when you give us your name, please?
Thank you very much.
Wait, 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 sorry.
Bring us this opportunity to see parliament.
My name is Zoliluw, I'm from Hanover. Ik is van Hanover. My name is Zoliluw. Probleem. Daar is een spoorlijn al die pad van Hanover naar de Ar. Maar niemand van Hanover heeft werk niet. Dit is ons brood en butter, ons enigste brood en butter. Maar waar kan ons aanzoek doen voor de werk bij die? Alles is heel de dag de Ar, de Ar, de Ar. Het niks voor ons niet. Ons heeft wel een. Maar zij is die. Spoorlijn gaat verbijt aan Hanover. Al die pad verbijt aan Hanover van de Ar. Maar ons is tot werkloos. Ons heeft geen werk niet. En dit is mijn vraag van dag. Het blijft.
Can we just check that mic, please? Because it's a bit difficult. Sorry for that. We've got some technical problem. Let me just sort that out quickly. Thank you very much. I think it's now all sorted. The next speaker, please limit your time to three minutes, please. And please introduce yourself and if you represent any organization?
Yes, thank you, sir, for this opportunity. As I've already said, thank you for your time. I'm Vincent Hyber from Hanover. Yeah, for me, around the bill issue is not a problem. Yes, we support it. But the question I'm asking, how is going to be protected the trains? The trains, if there is no employment, we are not employed. Yes, seriously, lady was saying, serious. We got a certificate of securities. None coming in Hanover as late already, sir. So we're going to ask you, can God or people of you can help us? Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker? Sorry.
Thank you very much for the opportunity and for your time. Wij dank je voor die geleentijd en voor die tijd vandaag om met ons te proberen ons te luisteren. Ik wil je vraag hebben, jeet hoe bescheren ons ons werk? Hoe kan ie voor ons werk geven? Mensen zoals ie is een staat om voor ons te kan werk verschaffen en werk te geven bij die spoorweg. Hoe kan ie dit doen? De slechts mensen zoals ie wat ons vandaag kan helpen. Wij dank je.
Thanks for the opportunity. I'm Pomeza from Daar. I'm one of the community conveyors. The challenge we're having, I'm seeing from the scripture, it's saying that there are safety inspectors currently appointed to do their jobs in your transport, which means now it's logistics. But from Pixie Casem, we haven't seen none of the safety inspectors coming to do their jobs. So what now I wanted is to find out how they were appointed because we've had numerous accidents happening at your railway lines. They were not inspected and no one attended to those. And we want appointments to happen for our youth in Daar, Hanover and Brixton and surrounding areas. Because we are really dissatisfied with the issue of deployment into positions, whereas people are now not qualifying for the post, but yeah, they get the jobs, although there are people sitting at home qualifying to do the jobs. That now leads to people not doing their jobs. As I was saying, that I'm seeing there's a safety inspector, which we know nothing of because they never attended to the issues, the challenges that are currently happening. Another thing, I would like to direct this to to Mister, who's now the gentleman who is now speaking to us. We need transparency in whatever is coming to our district, which is now Pixie Casem in everything. We need for your guys to come and create job opportunities for our youth. We don't need old people no more to come and advocate for us because they are not advocating in our best interest as the youth of Pixie Casem. We are lying with the challenge of the hub that was supposed to be opened. I think it was ten years back, but still the hub is not up and running, which means that you guys are feeling as you're not doing your jobs. And that is leaving us now frustrated as youth, frustrated as community members, frustrated as parents. So please can you speed up the process, look into that. We need that hub open for MTJN and other surrounding areas, ASP like as in yesterday. Otherwise, we're going to have a problem because when there's a promise that has been made ten years ago and no one is coming to to address up us as a youth, what is happening? Because we've been waiting for that program for so long. Thank you. I need answers on that, Madam Speaker. Bye.
Weer eens, goeiemoren. En wij dank je voor die geleentijd en weer eens voor die tijd. Mijn naam is Pomeza Jacobs en ik is van die omgeving, van de Ar. Eerstens wil ik net zeggen dat die veiligheidsinspecteer wat angesteld wordt niet, hulle werk doen niet. Hoe wordt hulle angesteld? Hulle doen nie inspectie nie. Daar is mensen wat dan thuis zit, wat die werk kan doen, maar nie angestel word nie. Ik wil ook voor je zeggen dat in die omgeving Britstaan, de Ar en Hanover, mensen moet werk krijgen. Hier die mensen moet ontplooien wordt in die omgeving om die werk wat gedaan moet worden te kan verricht. Ik wil hier die vraag graag richten aan die persoon wat nou met ons gepraat het, wat hier die verrichtingen geopend is. Iemand als ze blijf voor ons werk geleend hieruit komt skippen. De Ar is nie op die omlijke werking de dorp nie. Ie fal ons. Ons is gefrustreerd als ouers. Ons is uitgesfrustreerd als mensen van die dorp. Ons heeft ons werk dringend nodig. Zo is in gister, ISIP, zo gauw is montlik. Belofte is, maak skuld. Niemand luister voor ons nie. Niemand helpt ons nie. Niemand skippt voor ons werk schieden toen er is. Dat is al wat ik wil zeggen. Wij dank je.
Thank you. My name is Sandile Makandula, the ward councillor from DR. Thank you for bringing the parliament to the people. We really appreciate that. I think it's the first time that we see portfolio committees coming to the people. Don't stay there in parliament, come to the people because we want our inputs to be heard. Now, first thing that I would like to raise, it's a communication platform within the railway. Why I'm raising the communication platform? There are many complaints that are coming locally from the community, but it's so difficult to find a railway. For instance, things are happening here, but you don't know where to put your comments, you don't know where to put your complaints. It's hard to find the railway because even if you can go to this office, they are not even sure who to communicate with. So I think communication, if it can be accessible. And the other thing I want to speak, the board members. I can see in your, in your document, you spoke about the advertisement that is nationally. Please can you also make sure that your advertisement are also coming locally, provincial and district wise? Because there are many people who are interested to join the board, especially for non-executive. But now if you keep it only on the national level, it doesn't make any sense. That's why you need to come to the people. So I will, I will propose that in your amendment, you also put locally, let the advertisement also come local to our local people. Because there are many local people who also wants to be the board members, who have got interest and who've got capacity to also join. And the other one that I want to raise, the railway safety regulator basaris. That one I want to rub a stamp on it because we saw many basaris that are coming from your side, but they are not reaching local. And we've got a TV college, the instruction that we are having here, it's DR campus. That one can also accommodate our local people, but it's not supported even by the railway. This is a junction, it's a main junction even in South Africa. But if you can check the state of the infrastructure, it's old. So please can you come back, especially make sure that you support and equip the NCRTV college? Because we need engineering, we need people who will be safety inspectors, all of them. The other one that I want to raise is a railway age infrastructure, that means old infrastructure. Your infrastructures are becoming a white elephant and are also unsafe to our people. Please can you come back? Because our people are looking for infrastructure. If you are no more interested of using the infrastructure that is there, give it to our people. Because many infrastructure that I hear local, you'll find that it's transnet infrastructure. So those people, I mean those buildings are becoming the hotspot for crime. Many, many crimes that is happening here local, it's happening on those infrastructure, the age infrastructure. Please can you come back? Because we can identify a lot of infrastructure going to that side. There's a lot of infrastructure that has become a white elephant and also the old design. Please can you change the design? Let the design speak with the specific generation, let it speak to the specific thing because the design that we are having, it's still the old design. That's why railway safety is no more interest to our people because of the design that we are having. It's an old design. And also I think I already touched this one of unlock occupation, occupational of property, the unsafe. Please make sure that one, if you are no more interested of those building infrastructure, give it to the community or to the public. The other one that I want to raise is a law enforcement. You need to have a memorandum of understanding with the municipality so that they can make sure that the bylaws of the municipality speak. Because this infrastructure of railway are here in the local, not in the national level. They are here locally. So you need also to have a memorandum of understanding with the local municipality to ensure that we enforce law. Also align, the other thing that I want to ask, the railway, please can you align with the ITP? I don't, I don't remember even a single ITP that I saw a stakeholder that is coming from the railway. But now we are coming to the community, you've got this interest, you want inputs from the community. So can you please make sure that there is a stakeholder, even the invitation from the municipality must invite a stakeholder from the railway and even if it's a board member, even it's a member from parliament, whoever that you know, must also be part of the ITP. Because ITP, we are speaking about infrastructure that we are having here. And the other one I want to speak about the hub. The hub that we are having, it's becoming a white elephant. People that were skilled and trained on the same institution are now transferred to other areas, how then, what, what? So that means now this hub that we are having here is becoming the white elephant. What about the infrastructure that we are having, the local skills and the development? For you to develop locally, make sure that you start local because we are going to speak about the railway safety. But if you don't make sure people are employed, the local skills and also the development of all those infrastructure. By rose was, I've got lot. You just.
As you wrap up?
I have got only one minute now.
You've already used more than three minutes, but I'll allow you to wrap up.
Okay, thank you. Because other people have not raised, so I'm just adding for them. I think I've touched many of them. Because the other one, oh, 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 in the board members, because I can see you spoke about more than nine percent representing civil society with experience and knowledge. But it's just that unfortunate you didn't announce or tell us who are the board members currently now. We didn't know. So now my interest, make sure that civil society are also represented in those board members. Because you cannot speak about composition of board members, but when you see board members, you only see people that are not represented from this civil society. Because civil society are those who are assisting with safety and the railway. I think I'm done. The other one, I let me leave. There's a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very thank you. I'm Sandile. I'm from the Aar and I would like to say very thank you. I think this is the first time that you came here. And I'm glad that you want to know what we're saying, because we want to hear. And there is a part of what I want to speak. And the first thing that I want to speak is the communication platform of the road. Because there are a lot of people, a lot of people, but it's difficult to contact them. Because when things happen and the people are angry, then you don't go to the door and ask, "Are you sure you are ready?" And no one can say, "I want you to contact them." So as a belief, I try to better the communication. Then, I want to talk about the City Council. Now, you all know that we talk about the national flag. But I want to say, as a belief, it's pleasant. Because there are a lot of people here in the community who want to be in the city. So as a belief, pass this on, as I can say for an arrangement. There are people here who want to be the City Council. There are people who have a desire, who have a passion, and they can't come out. Then, I want to talk about the people. This will come as a lot of people who are available, but we don't see them here. What happens there? Here is an area that is nothing in South Africa, but the infrastructure is simply not good. We can call it white olive leaf. Because there is nothing. I want to say, as a belief, we need engineers. We need people with a passion. And as a consequence, as I said again to our infrastructure, it's unsafe. It's white olive leaf. If you stand there, nothing will be done. And as I say now, if you don't do anything, give it back to us. We want it. We want to build it. We want to improve it. Because the old construction is not a place where a mistake has occurred. So I want to say, come as a belief, to the stadium. Come, let us give you the building, which is not being used. And I want to say, as a belief, that this building, this building, it needs to be repaired. And the building, the building of the logo, needs to be repaired. It's old. This is not for people. This is not for young people. Again, as I say, if you want to help with the building and with the projects, give it to us. We want it. Help as a belief, as a lack of knowledge, with building. So that we can, on our own plate, have access to national building. Because we want to see that the regulations that are in the state is that it must work for us so that we can work together with the national one-place building in the following. I want to say further that European, European line must be. Because there are people who have to be moved to the gathering. When the road is important, now you can move, and sort of it can be better. Because as I said again, it's not a big white olive leaf. We want people to have something to grow. And we have people who have something to grow, but they don't get it. They just go to the other place. Here, it's the infrastructure that is important to us, and we want to develop it. So as a belief, begin pleasantly. We have here to grow, but it also needs to work. There are a lot of questions that need to be answered. I see that a lot of people from the City Council who have ninety percent and have experience, but I want to know who is the leader? Who is the City Council that is so? Is it the ones who are leading? And that's all what I want to say. Very thank you.
Good morning. My name is Pedro Mowers. I represent the community of Britstown. And I'm thankful for your opportunity to be here. I want to start here, to say that you're the representative of Transport, who was in Britstown on Friday to speak to us. Has begun to say that we can, any sort of problem that we find in our community can come and speak. But of course, it is not Transport in specific, that is not the road. So I will be glad. Our first problem is what Manauer also talked about. And it is that the Aar's people are unemployed by railway, by road, not in the pleasant. We are also part of the broader community of Pixie Kassebe municipality. Then, and we feel happy that you are here today. Because for us, the road is very important in terms of the fact that it can bring work. But I want to say, that we are on the ten, twelve, and twenty. What Transport involves is the rail motors that come from Kuruman and from Elkenafkoom. As we consider the shortest route to the west coast. Our national route, ten, ten, twelve, short improvements. And as I can correct the phrase, I heard that one of the communities that is doing this is going to start the upgrade of the ten will begin. But the twelve is with the same problem. And the same aspiration, certainly, has been achieved. And our speaker is here. With him speaking, we are sitting with the youth center that has taken the printing away. With him speaking, we are sitting with the library where our youth have a desire to go to the library. Because we have not had internet there yet. Then, we are twenty. On the consequences of this, without social development, which is not twenty. They are doing this in the community to prevent it because the municipality is built. What they are using, the old library, has not been utilized. And there are a lot of other issues that I want to take up. But we are glad that we are in Transport. And then, I had my opportunity to meet him and talk about the other problems that we have. Very thank you.
Good morning. I'm Pedro Mowers and I'm representing a ward in Britstown. Thank you again for the opportunity and for the time that you are taking to come to us and let us speak to you. A representative from Transport came to us and said we can bring all our problems to you. I just want to emphasize to you that the railway is extremely important to us. Over and above of the fact that it will supply and brings us jobs and job opportunities, it also is something that we need, something that this town desperately needs. And someone before me also said, "Why is everything concentrated on the Aar?" Britstown also needs opportunities as that the Aar is currently receiving. Just as a matter of fact, I just want to also say that currently, the N12 route that runs past Kuruman and passes through the Aar is seriously and desperately in need of improvement. These tracks run through the town and we do need to improve these roads. Mariental is currently experiencing exactly the same problem. Then, Madam Speaker, I know I've got other problems and I just want to name a few and then I will stay with the Transport problem. But just to say to you, that this library is totally, totally inadequate. There is absolutely no internet. We cannot make use for our social development also. For that specific reason, our library cannot be utilized to its full capacity. I know I am not allowed to deviate from the topic of Transport, so I will stay with Transport. If you can just address the Transport problems for now, that will be fantastic. Thank you very much again for the opportunity.
Next speaker.
En cosi mchali ngapambi. Mchali ngapambili, okokta la manibulele. Okubani bulisele ureliwe kustelo, nokusputula kakumpi. Ikamalam, juguzenzile wakamachobeni. Tukumshali wasefitoria West, pansikomaspalo ubuntu municipality. Kulea richi niyepixlikasen. Eh, adizitumaanga, di nivewu kanduba. Eh, manduliya enzengue ward committee member. And I am serving in all subcommittees of Victoria West. Yonki subcommittee in Abantu, ene ngaki is Abantu, I am there. Madam Speaker, you will agree. It is quite a long time asking the government to revive railway station. It was really a long overdue, but today we just want to say thank you. I have made a written submission because of the guys that were here, that were there in the meeting yesterday. They said to us, instead of standing there for three hours, rather make a written submission and submit it to the authority. That's what I did. I've made two pages of written subscription. This entails most of the things. Vandalization, you call them, unemployment, it is also here embedded in this document. I just want to forward it to you, people, and say to you, thank you very much for coming to the Northern Cape. Thank you once.
Thank you very much. You can give it to that table on your right. Thank you very much.
Good morning all and thank you very much, Chairperson. First, let me thank you for bringing back the railway and the trains and making sure that we have better lives. My name is Zenzile Machobeni. I have been given a responsibility as a council member. I serve in a number of committees. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Manbulise, ikamalam dungukavelo wagamudia. And maava as EU ward committee, epuma emsobomvu. Disau kankanya ge indau ezimbi ne. Nkonba esesnega inaga, kuitala lika transnet. Eh, Ekoosberg, sijongene ene ngagi yendoba ngava. Abantu abasevenza payana, babini kupela. Abangeta umpagati ezogon. Of which, iithinga yendoba ngava. Kubenengubela, kuzame ukaxwa. Abantu abaninz, because inkunulanda oliana. So ababa nababini, abawazba baba sngete ukukalezle. So benza utela ge yendoba ngabutransnete, ichonge londo. Azame ge ukukayaxa, ngakumpi iulucha. Goba abanda wasefenza panga, abanda wataala, kutala, tazaluwa. Esabenzapaya, lubava naangoku sasevenza payana. Of which, sentina minyaga eminiz. Befanba inova, selipanzu, siteta ukukajua omnyom. But usasevenza yonona payana. So benditigewo kutransnete, azame uchoonga, nentwesinjalo, okubanga ba akache ulucha. Di buyen, diye kuesbi ni, enovasbon. Be sinayo i train station payana. I train ibisima payana, koto angoku yavalu stishi sakona, sekondo enzegayo. Andige asas, noba ngeela induni, yalondo le. Gogo ge besifuna singumpagati stela yendoba ngava. Utransnete anasbuisela, i train igwazu, kuti ingete umpagati. Goba si asogola kakulu, ngenda wasefitoria. Taifige lela kui novasbon. So ge, kana je benusa musbuisela esastishi. Because ngo indwenzegayo pasia vandalizwa, sia moshega akondo ienzegayo. So benditige, nesame ju uchoonga, ezondaava ez, encosi.
Good morning, Chairperson. Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Gabelo Mulia. I'm standing here as a ward committee member of Umsobomvu. In Ekoosberg, we are facing a problem of understaffing. Only two people are employed to assist the public. I am pleading that you ask Transnet to please employ more people. I'm also particularly asking that Transnet employs young people. Because in Ekoosberg, we have old people who are working there and they've been working there for quite some time. We feel that with the vibrancy of youth, people who are employed, there can be a better service given to the community. The person I know to be working there, who is among only two people who are employed there, has been there for quite some time. I feel that the youth could also be given an opportunity to be employed at this particular station. Secondly, we had a train station in the area that I come from. Today, that train station has been closed and it is only there to be vandalized. This is not conducive. We are struggling with Transport. If this train station could be fixed, the community would be able to utilize the train and travel with comfort. We are pleading that the train station, please come back. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Those are the two things I wanted to bring to the attention of the committee.
Thank you. Before the next speaker starts, let me check if there's other hands so that we can flow. I'll start on the right-hand side this time. One, the ladies, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten at the back. We'll do another round after that, then we'll come to the left. And you can continue. Thank you.
Eh, tabulis, tungukola niskei, tunguasi anova, zotetis clause. Mchali ngapambili, tikela untrakusele apa kumkulu. Tibona apa emkulu ini, kuklo thirty-two, yokuteti-five. Kuteta ngukti valopa is skill, training institution. Tikelukwazi, ingabe, ezos skill, zitutetwa ngazo apa ku thirty-five. Sezubanga Abantu abapa paga ti ku Transnet, okanyez. Abantu abanga pange lipaga Transnet, bayafuma na ilendo. Ichanse obabazilendo ba ti valopa ezos skill. Di pende diye na ku sixty-two, kupa kilendo kumkulu wako. Di ona kutetwa ngilendo, ngeko geki, geki construction ne. Ingabe kutetwa ikondraki. Okany, kutetwa uTransnet, kuwaake alendo, asabenzee apa emkenuake. Okany, kuyeku nyuluwa, ku fakuwa itenda for ikondrakis tele. Henye ndo, enzitela we, namshaluku ngapambili, ngatuse. Yize ku lendo, kuchepi, kumetam speaker. Uh, ku lendo, metam speaker. Tikelu kuza, ene ngelunkele liniani ke ngoku. Niwatacha pi amantla, okany, ezobezza kuza londo, kumeyara. Yokuba, EUAT six, nitini as, ipilonga panske anova. Abantu abase, abavo ta EUAT six ka base anova. Kota nitate abanbasenukort, abanbasenmetel, abanbasikuspeg. Asabenzee, emchlabeni was EUAT six. Ekona Abantu basianova. Enaipa, payanez skill, yosebenza paya. Asabenza angelanza, ezizimbi ni latisinazo. Henye indoza itela kowe, wena, not wena mchali ngapambili, wena madam speaker, tabule.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Kolani Skae from Hannover. Please explain clause thirty-five for me. It talks about developing skills. I would like to find out, are those skills for people who are already in the company? Or are you going to develop skills for people who are still unemployed? And then, please explain clause sixty-two for me, which talks about building and employing contractors. I would like to find out, is Transnet going to give out tenders to contractors who are outside? Or are they going to use their own internal contractors who are already inside the company? And then, Madam Speaker, I would like to find out from you specifically. You know that EUAT six belongs to Hannover. Yet, when you are doing jobs, you give jobs to other people. Yet, when you are doing jobs, you give jobs to other people who are from other areas. Yet, we are available and we have the same capabilities as the people that you are giving the jobs from other places. Please explain why do you do that? Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Hoya daxe, ekas Jakobus Petersa. Ek verteenwiordag Britstown, viksewe emtangeni. Bahya danki railway. Tekilefonsi, ni geledegele, ons'andagebi ka itspoolen afpak. Andi erste plek, ekit itlousilisofunag deregagan. Ekit nerens geleze daar, eh, olderdomsbeperking befatie. Wat ek graha wale, olderdomsbeperking von 18 tot 35, moet ersinwot. Ons'ower as 35, ons'kri nerenswerke. And then tweedans, zo si sial wet, di wet say, you might 18 jah out wes'om te kan stem. Ma howcome as it come by di wet, 18 tot 35? What war van ons? En eh, zo is in Britstown, da ar, anogwa. Ekadaw sial ganke bi railway, bi Transnet. Howvele menze da werk van Britstown or wa anogwa? Ekarentiwe i, ge xalai datte bay, abaidate bis ganke, as net da ar addresses. Geen Britstown, geen anogwa, geen anertling dorpini. Di, ek wale, dat walege di. Onsa Madam Speaker, muda derehitva emtangeni council to, imu red na hale to neem. As da werk itkom, hau op, bi emtangeni say, hale moet onsa ansoke anneem. Onsa sivis orlangzi parkwer. Lat ons', onsa ansoke derehitna i to, ansook dung. And emtangeni mut itgekado in di processi, van desho kom net da ar, alien werkri. Bahya danki railway. Thank you, have a nice day.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Jakobus Peters. I'm representing Britstown. And I'd like to thank you for this opportunity, because I'm here to vent. I went through this bill very quickly and I noticed that there's a conspicuous absence of age restrictions. And when people work, they say that you should be between 18 and 35. And I want that to be revised, because what about us? There's no work for us older than that. You have to be 18 years old to vote, but apparently you can start working before then. But why this age restriction of 18 to 35? Again, what about us? If you think about the fact that there's Daar and there's Britstown and there's Hannover, but if you look at the people who work at these railway stations, if you look at these people who work there, you'll see only the Daar addresses. So Madam Speaker, I'm directing this directly to you. When it comes to work and it comes to applications for work, I don't think it's fair that we direct it elsewhere. I think we should direct it directly to you. I think we should apply directly for you, because otherwise we're not going to find work. Thank you.
Diabulela, bandaga transnet abala, kamalamna dibupati we, dizuka enukoriti, pazi, Umsobomvu municipality. Kiten kosi ngokuza. Tine kwe shini, zimbalo agakulu, panska transnet. Di tunywe mnanga, manina, asenoporiti. Ati ndibuze kuwa transnet yendoba ngaba. Bakona mama, ekreito, abakeshu weyo, ekhafu bakona. Kotenoporita bakeshu. Kotoka fneke bezzo esewenza, besuka ekhafu, nasekreito, oma ma bayasuka bazo ukpangela apenoporiti, as i understanding obakteni, siya itela layo, oma basenoporiti bakeshuwe. Okuesbi ni, basitela ange age. Asiambe lane nentwe age itina. Because if our father zetu, zazpangela kuwa Transnet, kwa balanga age. Okuestatu, kaku keshu aku transnet, wetsa besiri masambi ningoku. Kaye kesho loma sambe ni, kaye kesho, ukesho abanda baniza bazika laz, as understanding obakteni. Bangaba ufuna 50, ukasha 5 year makosa, akasha 45 year makalats, as yazilo, dosfuna kwazi, ngoba bakteni ksenze kalondo. Enye indwe sikela kuwa Transnet, siya kela Transneti toho. Siya skoba panska wako Transnet. Sikeli trends etu bek, which junction yetu, twa inoporiti. Kobi junction ya ipaya nakakati. Siya sfuni trends etu, olashobola zambangalo, every day. Oko kobe. Siya skoba again for the last time. Nditi i junction yetu, enoporiti. Enoporiti siya itela, siya ifuna bov. Niskaliba kutemi, ningafnu ibuisela beketra i junction yetu, kuti, ngos.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairperson. My name is Patiwe Malan. I'm from the Umsobomvu municipality. I have a few points, questions and concerns that I'd like to raise about Transnet. I want to state categorically that I represent the women from where I come from. We have particular grievances as women from this area, because we feel as though we are being discriminated against on the basis of being women when it comes to employment at Transnet. Whenever there are opportunities for employment, we feel that as women, we are consistently being overlooked. I also want to state that this particularly happens in the Kredo and Khraf Rainet area. We find that women do not, are unable to take up opportunities for employment. I find this to be very discriminatory. I also want to state that we don't agree with the discrimination on the basis of age. In my experience, our forefathers were given opportunities to work in, at Transnet and they were not subjected to discrimination based on age. So I want to categorically state that I don't agree that people must be discriminated against to take up employment on the basis of age. The other issue of discrimination I'd like to raise is that whenever there is recruitment regarding employment, we find there to be a racist undertone, as we find that majority of people who are employed by Transnet are colored and not black. Our stance is that we would like our trains to come back every day and we humbly request for you to bring back the trains to our junction. I thank you very much.
The next speaker.
Eh, manitata itubandisbusele. Eh, ikamalamdi, Simpiwesiko, from Noport, Umsobomvu municipality. Eh, EUAT committee member, enamen elitichapersini, in my area. So I'm here to represent, inanzika, my community. Eh, usi sebesesuka apa, u nyatelle ginda bay e junction. Eh, inoport used to have, used to be i junction. So now, sibonile ba ingati, ya suswa apenoport, dizawenzwa e rose meeting middleback. So bestela ge, ike ichoonge lindo bayale junctioni, pindibuiselipaya, na koz, abantu bebekate esewenza, sekomi esewenza ngoku. We are relying, inanzika, kwez, pischopanana zakatransnet. Okosbi ni, kukinda bay e vandalizing, eh yenzekayo, koz ngoku, i, inde yenzekayo, kya, biwa i cables, i kubiwa kwa i, inanzika, yendoko, kufalue ngazo pesporuini. So siya kela i tatali ngalelo londo le. And then, ke genzwene renovations, koz abantu bati ba ubone ba akondo yenzekayo, ba fuma ne ichansi, yu, inanzika, yu vandalizing. So, siya kela ge, u, inanzika, kutsechurish where is, is she is, because we are fearing a situation we pay, enye, emini, is she is not well secured, because training at raila, yongena ki community esalakuyo. And then, kuko, imanganis, eh busy. Imanganis, it's too busy, because ya ama getraks, ya ama getrain. So we do have it depo, lendaw nditij junction twa inoport, we do have it depo. So best nes telo, gez, gez mines, ntsambe, bekwa indaw, kuzawutukuthulu kuyo klet depo, inanzika, imanganis, so that they can pick it up close. U, sugai, inanzika, inoport, it's about 400 kilometers from Noport to PE. As compared to sugai Kuruman, it's about 1,000 and something to go to PE. So at least, baba noza, mamtsamla, 400 case, at least you drive, baba nautibati, no sugai, inanzika, barayi 400 kilometers. And then, diya kela, lendawa escrepiats, kugiscrepiats, because they are buying es cables. Ne, inanzika, ntsimbisla pesporuini. So sines telo, ke kupi, apa is security, bekwa diakreni so is security, koz, ur railway, itala, bekate, kwa masegurutak, sekoma seguriti. Ipa, lo, lo, bekwa utry, inanzika, lo company, keshuweyo, ubone esewenza paya ndaba bini. So sines telo. And then, lendawa yenzika, be, just to, kusapota, lendawa yenzika, ye, ye depo, estela i fulue pakut. Inela, they are in bad state, baba unutonga, u sugai, be no, the cable, yu puma, yu chigela, inanzika, we are in PE, there are a lot of potholes, because of, inanzika, trakas, imanganis. So sines os telo, lendawa e depo, so siya, supporter, lendawa e depo, so sines telo, sputes fula le i depo, please, ngos.
Let me take the opportunity to greet the committee. My name is Simpiwesiko. I am from Umsobomvu municipality. I am a council member, so I am representing the council in the area. We are requesting for the Noport to be brought back. I'm supporting the previous speaker, for the Noport, for the Noport to come back. And then, there's the issue of vandalizing, which is a very big problem in our area. Can this issue please be looked at very urgently? Because there's cable theft and other issues that are putting our lives at risk as the community. And also, the manganes business is way too busy in this area. So we are requesting that we have a depot closer so that our drivers don't have to travel far, so that the drivers can travel at least long distance, so that we can avoid them being tired. Also, can we, can Transnet please beef up security in the railway? Because the scrapiers in the area are buying the stolen cable theft, which is a big problem. So if Transnet can please beef up the security so that we can try and avoid this issue as well. Uh, thank you so much for the opportunity, Chair.
Next speaker.
Eh, manitata ituba namke, ndibulise, ndibulise ipot, ndibulise abashlali. Na ikama angutebani, nguchali, isenei. Eh, difunange, uku, vyokalisale, ngalabo, okanyi, esis kalazo. Goba, imasha, andya nova zeska railway, okanyi, zeska government, zeske, zafike hlali, ndipaku EUAT 7, Jeremiah Solomon Prentje Britstown, di member EUAT committee pa. Ba fike pa, besiti ke kuti, it department yes. Eh, kwasuka, anake, ngokwesalosha, ibanga basenengage isile, sizawkwa azuka addresses, ibanga basenengage ka transport, transport tusawekona, ibanga bongu health, wealth tusawekona. Yonkeno, ndibona jez, zotilisana, netinge pil, eka railway. So baskosi isile kaboba, ndiballegila na londo, kau pumusi emizin. Utalela, abantu, zintwesire, right, zisawazuslu, kwa tinaz, tripe rixele, oko, basfika pakontwenzekayo. Na, sesklile ke i kolik, nentwesinizi, enkana yoka kulu, yendoba ken ngoku le age restriction. Yabon, kaku kimi sebenzi deployment, izipaya, nakutwa izani, ne sivi zene, subeki sivi, ufune i create isile, ndibe ke compliant, kwez akrate. Ubu, yake ngoku, ufunu unkreta, uteta, yendoba, fana kobe 18, ukya ku 35. Mna, ndingumzali, wa nomta nona 18. Ekfunakan, ndumpembile, nduma, ambi se iskolo, okanyi. Kubekukutetafile, nku chike, mna, dizoksalapansi, nisongi zanda. Di seten zwela kanhuyi, loa, esewenza le, mna, nomama, ken abanya bakoi. I rongo kakulu, ken londo ba si choonge, singuk government, kaka xwa, choonga, i create isame nazo, kuba uchoonge i age restriction. Goba ezo kusisandaw, tala lebeskate esewenza, esewenza kutwa izani, sivi ako. Ila ako, fana kasi ambene, siyofundaane ba, si kwa azwa kafune ki create, sipisana ke create zetu. Difuna veru esbi ni, ntetan ngomnoto, wasi emtangeni. Ya visisa, ez doropesindata ez, andizunge na kakulu, kwi twa siya Nova, ya si tiara, ya si Britstown. Yentwe bona gala yole, siya yaz. Bakke basewenza, Transnet akrate pa, sitibana, ababa ndaba i 50, eh, Britstown. Pia seten, ndiakala, kubiliwe, tinasi teela, snami sebenzi. Omnoto ke maushere, ekwali, kwez, kwez doropesindata, okanyi, apenemtangeni. Agne, tikufuna kama kusika, abanya abantu, baba we, baba well, ndontontina, sibesi telepasing ekko, sibesi, sinyad, sithune zeleki. So kani choonge na layo, kano, niya skabanisa, ni nabapati mandla, kani zange, missebenzi. Kani yen, tenje, missebenzi, ibe ekwali, nomnoto si benefite, si song, ngos.
Thank you, Chairperson. Let me take this opportunity to greet you and the committee and the entire community today. Um, I, my name is Tembani Charlie, from Ward 7, Britstown. I first want to state that I feel as though I've been misled by coming here today, as the person who recruited us to come told us that we could come and raise any issues related to health, transport and whatever other issues we had to raise with the government. So when I get here today, I only found out that we are only dealing with the bill. I'm left very confused. I don't think that this is appropriate, because I prepared to come and address all the issues that I thought I could be able to address today. Um, so please look into this and please ensure that when people recruit us to come to such gatherings, they give us accurate information. Nonetheless, Chairperson, I want to state also, as it has been said by other speakers, that I find the age restrictions placed by Transnet for job opportunities as very discriminatory. The fact that, uh, many of these opportunities are limited to youth between 18 to 35 years old makes it a very difficult situation where in a household, you are forced to let your 18-year-old child to go to work because you, as the parent, are too old to take up the job opportunity. This is not a very good setup. As we want our children to go to school and not work for us, it should be the other way around. Secondly, I'd like to state that we feel very aggrieved by the fact that we are not all equally actively participating in the economy in this area. This causes a great deal of conflict. When Transnet presents job opportunities, we are mostly unaware and we can't take them up. We mostly see Transnet dealing with many projects and many people employed. We don't know how it happens. We just see people employed and we didn't know how to take up the job opportunities. So we'd like for you to intervene, to implore Transnet, to share job opportunities equally and without any discrimination. We would like to categorically state that this causes a great deal of conflict amongst us as community members and we feel like the conflict comes from you as the people in power and leaves us fighting amongst one another. This is not a good situation. Please intervene. I thank you very much for the opportunity.
Uh, thank you. Next speaker, but before the speaker speak, can I just, um, all the issues that's already been raised, so that we don't duplicate, uh, can we, can we refrain from, from duplicating those issues? So unless it's specifically related to this rail safety, um, bill, the rail safety regulator. Um, so I would like the translators to translate that maybe, and easy kosa, and Africans, please.
Menze, for us now, gan, for it gan, madi folgende speaker, wilakne gha'ofra, dat amal ase blif, moy oplet na watalis say, da daris reets eklikke kwezis reets ge opa. Unisfra, bahya moy, dat tukomstige spreakers wat na nogan wil prad, ni, weere ins kwezis no, wat reets gelig is ni. Daris kennis geneem davvan, zo ekfra se blif, mo ni dinge heral, wat reets ge say is ni, so far wondlik.
Transporting drugs from point to point so that our young people can remain drug users. And at the end of the day, we are here having to complain or rather blame the same community members, whereas the government itself or rather the Transnet itself is failing reduce, it's failing producing. On that note, about the awareness activities. I feel that young people want to explore into or rather young people want to take part in, in the employment sector of Transnet. They don't, they, they want to, they want to apply, but it's not getting there because Transnet in front of their eyes is being drawn as a monster. The reason why it's been drawn as a monster, I'll tell you. It is because it goes in a generational chain as a family. If Utransnet was employed, when Keka retires, they will take their sons and whatsoever, which family deserves to be developed. Okay, and I talk too much, I know. Nonetheless, coming back to Trans-
It's your platform.
It's my, oh, okay, okay. Thank you. Nonetheless, again, um, when we're talking about Utransnet that has, I'll emphasize on what the councillor was talking about. When we're talking about Transnet having vacant places and we having, because I'm from the NPO sector, I'll talk about myself, very important, because I'm advocating for the, for the relevancy of young people. We are having vacant spaces, your hubs that can be utilized to make sure that there is skills development towards young people, to make sure that our young people will remain empowered. But these spaces, we can't occupy them because we are not given the opportunity to do so. Imagine if it were to be said, the young people of Nodwagaas or rather the young people of Hannover, ten of them are being almost each and every month, even if it's three times, eh, eh, two times, three days, sorry, even if it's three days in a month, they are being called for a training in a hub that will give them accredited skills development, completion of certificates. It's not there, it's not happening. Yet we are always here having to wonder or rather cry about social illnesses. Yes, they will be there and of course they shall remain there because we are having vacant spaces. Where these young people feel it's okay for them to take drugs from your cars, transport cars of Transnet and go and eat their drugs in those spaces. A lot of these things would have happened or rather a lot of these things would have changed our community. But it's not happening because Usindisa Keka is not coming from the well-known family. It's not possible for Usindisa to be given the opportunity to, to utilize the hub. Not to forget the fact that we are being failed as young people. At some point, because I think the fact that you should be employed having an experience for two years, started living metric last year, it makes no sense for a civil human being like myself. Young, some of us, we need to make sure that this one is very clear. Some people are born for university, some people are not born for university, some people have the skills. But those skills are being neglected because our buildings are turned into a ghost house, nonetheless to continue further and I'll finish now, now sir.
Your time is running out.
Thank you. Um, and then I think we should also talk about the Iguari. Quarry that we need to make sure that the, 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 as those disposal, it's at least taking part in a way because um, our people are dying slowly but surely because the place is not being utilized professionally or rather utilized how it was supposed to. And um, please, please, let's also make sure that we take note of the refurbishment of railway and infrastructure in Daar as the national junction and center. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Goeie mooie mensen, ik is Mgisak Kekke. Ik vertien voor het gemeenschap. Ik kom van week drie af. En ik wil eerst eens beginnen te praten over die deel wat noem, over die functies en die machten. Kom ons, ik praat over, ik denk is artikel veertig. Kom ons praten over opvoeding en opleiding. Ik versta niet waar ik precies hoe dat werkt. Die vraag, wat ik hier zo'n vraag is, hoe werk jullie opleiding? Leid dit tot bevoegdheid? Want mensen hierzo krijgen niet nooit weinig die opleiding waarvan nou gepraat wordt niet. Nou zoals mensen wat werk heeft bij Transnet, ja, dat is raar, maar, en dan wordt gezegd dat het een opgeleid wordt, maar aan de einde van dat de opleiding gaan hun werk bij Transnet en hadden nog steeds geen accrediteerde certificaten niet. Hoe werkt dit? Kom ons praten over bewismaken. Dan wordt genoemd over die rol van Transnet en hoe dit rol speelt in onze gemeenschap. Kom ik zei velen wat rol Transnet in onze gemeenschap speelt? Dwelms. Jullie ruij, jullie, jullie spoor wie je breng dwelms naar ons toe en dan vat ons kinders, ons jeugd. Gebruik jullie dwelms direct van jullie treinen af. Transnet is bezig om groot te misslikken. Als ze denken aan die bewismaking over de jeugd, dit, hoe werkt dit? Hullen kan niet deelnemen in Transnet, hullen kan niet deelnemen in werk bij Transnet niet. En Transnet werd uitgemaakt als een monster en ik wil dit hier zo duidelijk stellen, Transnet is een monster. Want hullen vat niet nieuwe mensen in niet. Als een nieuwe mensen een dienst geneemd wordt, dan is die scene van iemand dat reeds daar werk, hij wordt opgebracht in die reële werken, zoals dat, zo een werk, en dit is niet nieuwe mensen wat inkom niet. Zo mijn kind kan niet nooit winnen, aan andere kant kan hij nooit winnen, daar is een werkje, want hij is niet een van die erfgenaam kinders niet. Maar ja, ik, ik weet, ik praat een beetje te veel, maar ik wil nog iets zeggen, ik wil nog iets praten over die gebouwen van Transnet, wat leeg staan. Ik is hierzo namens de jeugd. Ik wil zeggen dat ook een gebruik van die daarige gebouwen, die daarige gebouwen staan leeg, ons kan het gebruiken om mensen op te lijden, ons kan ons jeugd bemachtig, ons kan levaardigere geven. Maar nee, ons doen het niet met daarige gebouwen staan leeg. Dit zal gewoon is als, kom ons zeggen, tien mensen, misschien drie keer een maand, kan gaan naar daarige gebouwen toe, van Zee Marano veraf, om daar zo opleiding te krijgen, zodat hullen aan de einde daar van werkelijk accrediteerde certificaten, dat hullen vaardigere het wat hullen kan gebruiken. Ja, ons praat over die problemen wat er in de gemeenschap is. En ja, dwelms is een probleem, dit is iets wat ons definitief moet krijgen, wanneer die knie krijgt. Want zoals ik genoemd heb, dit komt direct op die treinen, dit wordt hij naar de vervoer naar ons kinders toe. Zo, kom ons ontwikkel eerder ons gemeenschap. Kom ons krijgen nieuwe mensen in niet net mensen wat oor geaard wordt, wat uit de lederen uitkomt niet. Zo, ik wil graag he, iets wat ik wil verstaan, iets wat ik wil verstaan is, dan wordt voor mij dat mensen twee jaar zijn ervaring meteen, maar dan wordt hij een dienst geneemd nadat hij niet laat zijn uit met trek uit is. Hoe werkt dit? Maak, dit maak je eenvoudig, net gelat niet sinnig. Kom ik zei velen, daar is sommige mensen wat geboren is om in de westerse tuin te gaan, ja. Maar daar is een andere mensen wat geboren is om vaardigere ook te doen. Daar is mensen wat wil werk in ander manier en daarige mensen wordt niet in aangeneem niet. Daar is mensen wat stadig bezig is om dood te gaan in die steengroeve. Kom ons verpeter net hier in de westerse tuin en krijg dit raar hier in de Aar.
Good morning Chairperson, um, my name is Mter. Gonzana. Um, my biggest problem is the fact that can all Transnet please bring back the, the fence so that um, they protect us from the trains? And also can they please give us jobs because we are unemployed? The other issue that we're having is that Transnet is holding land that they are not using. Yet they could be giving that, that land to the community, for the communities to develop themselves. Thank you Chairperson.
Goeie mooie voorzitter in die panel. Na vierendertig jaar is Transnet weer terug op die dorpe. Ik dank die jaren voor dat ik nog uit die leven uit is, dat ik kan vandaag met iemand gesels. Voorzitter, let zo klein oorsig van je geven. 1977, het onze boek let bekendgesteld, de Aar stad in worden. Daar was groei in die dorpe, daar was ontwikkeling in die dorpe. Deer Transnet onszelf, maar dit was iets afrikaanse spoor, wanneer avonds, zoals je weet. Later heeft die van bijke veranderd, na Otto Net Spoornet en moeder lichaam wat Transnet is. Voorzitter, is met dat diebe heim weer wat ik vandaag hier staan. En terugkijk, hoe de Aar gebloei in zijn bloeitijd perkt. 1989, toen die vorige minister van vervoer piet die duplessie en zij zien Johan Duplessie. Die vervoer van die spoor afgevattet en op die pad gezettet, het ons problemen daar begon. 1989 heeft Transnet begonnen met die rationalisering en ik was deel van dit, want ik had twintig jaar gewerkt op wij stad hier. Voorzitter, Transnet heeft bijna achtdzehn mensen verarmen, de Aar in die strie. Hier is 32 kleiner dorpen en municipaliteiten als Mtanjeni. Dat is nog de Aar municipaliteit voor die allemaal gemeer van tweedzehn. En daar die 32 dorps is, kom zoek allemaal een lisse heil hier. Hier was groot ontwikkeling, agricuraal. Hier was zelfs die grafsteen het ons gebouw hier, ons het bootte gemaakt, ons het caravan gemaakt. Die dorpe werd gebloei in zijn bloeitijd perkt. Het is nog jammer dat i, die vorige regeringse sandes me nou oornemen. 1989 zelden we ons die werkers, dit zou net voor drie jaar zijn. Dan zal die mensen weer herangesteld worden. Maar dus het was die groot zwart gevaar dat op pad is 1990, the second of February. And the 11 of February, ons allemaal weten is mijn geschiedenis nou. Voorzitter, hier heeft dagelijks een al vier windrichtings noord, zuid, oosten, west. Er is al meer is 200 treinen, passagiers treinen en goederen treinen gelopen. Daar was spoorweerpolici op die treinen. Spoorweerse infrastructuur of Transnet's infrastructuur was niet zo afgebrekt geweest niet. Maar met die onttrekking, want Transnet is om totaal gaan onttrekken. Als ik praat van die achtdzehn, Voorzitter, dan praat ik van alle sectoren van Transnet wat hier geweest is. Bij het gepraat van die ansleiding, die junction, ons allemaal weer in die geschiedenisboeken en zo voorts. Met zijn onttrekking, het een groot leemt is, werkloosheid, armoede in de gemeenschap achtergelaten. Jammer Voorzitter, ik me zelf bekendgesteld, ik is Patrick van Staan, ik is een CPF lid, Community Police Forum. Ik is een watercomité member van Watdo Mtanjeni de Aar, als ook een schoolgaming body member. Zo Voorzitter, Transnet moet dat ons een diepte aan gaan kijken. Ons weten is vandaag niet makkelijk, om al drie miljard randen. Maar dit zal moeten, als die treinen weer op die spoor kan komen, zal ons minder doen op ons paaien hebben. Ons heeft elke week over ons, laatst nacht nog, dus het is allemaal gezien het, hoe daar weer eindensgebots, schoolkinders, is vandaag niet meer met ons niet. Daar die jaar waar die treinen, treinen is bij een veiliger als die padvervoer. Al hoe wel die padvervoer verniger, zij vraagt, zij bestemming krijgt. Heeft ons fast vrij toch gehad op spoorweer, wat binnen achtiere staan die mooi ochen. Staan die aan die pakkeertrein, waar het afgeleid wordt en zo voorts.
Bae danke, um, ik hoop, ik kan gewoon-
Ah, Chairperson, right Chairperson, lastly please, with respect to you Chairperson and your panel. Chairperson, kijk hoe lang de Aar, die spoorweer. Meneer, het nou gepraat in uw gebouwen, wat zo gefandialiseerd is en zo voorts. Als dit omgeskip geweest is en wat i nog het doen het wat bij hartserlijk is. I stel contracteurs van buitenaf, ons is ook SMV's op onze dorpe hierzo. Om beveiliging te kan bekampen op die spoor, in die spoorweer, van i jaar is bij een groot is zo. I de bij een bij een groter in de Aar. Denk voor hier die dingen Voorzitter, bemachtig ons mensen ook. Als wat al die contracten net uit de Aar heeft gaan, ons mensen krijgen die krimels. Hullen wordt toch hier, hier is security, ze alles, hellei opleidings en zo voorts. Al komen die mensen van buitenaf, helaar komen fatnesse werker. Dan is die ander dank-
Bae danke, bae danke, het is op, danke.
Good morning, uh, Chairperson and panel. My name is Patrick Janssen van Staaden and I want to just say that thank God. After thirty-four years, Transnet is back in town. Chair, I just back at what happened in the Aar, just a short overview if you would please. In 1977, the Aar, in this place, we released a book called The Aar and the Volker, directly translated The Aar in clouds, we walk on the clouds or in the clouds. Development did happen even then through whatever Transnet was called then. The name have changed many times since then, I know that. But it was a heartfelt and deep sadness that I stand here today in front of you that when I look back on those years and how fantastic that was. You see, the father and the son, they took trains and transport away and put that on the roads. In 1999, we all know the history, it was nationalized, transport was nationalized, I was a part of that. Eight thousand people were left impoverished. Thirty-two towns had amalgamated, was left with vacant spots. We all know that this town flourished. It's a pity that you have to see this intense decomposing of this town. It's also a pity that I have to stand here today and tell you that you have inherited the sins of the previous government. In, on two, uh, on the second of February 1990, we all know the history, I repeat it. We know that the trains that happened here, that came in on a daily basis, was good. We had the railway police, they police the services, the infrastructure was sound and decent. But when it retracted, it retracted in all the sectors in the Aar. The Aar was known as the junction, the intersection, the hub of all the sectors of transport. We've built everything here, we had all the sectors of what was transport in the Aar. Now it is left with vacant spots and people are impoverished. I am a member of the Community Police Forum, I'm also a member of many other committees. I know it is not easy to regain money, all those billions of renns. But I also want to say, I know that you've said over my time, but I want just to state that the railway can relieve the death and the death toll on roads. Our trains were safe and they are safer than railroad, than road transport. Fast freight was something that was so effective, if you wake up the next morning, all your freight was there in the parking lot waiting for you. Lastly, I just want to say, look at the Aar today, let's rebuild it. I want to ask you that please empower us, please think of us, empower us and let us, the people, have the Aar back and is flourishing here, thank you for that.
Speaker?
Good morning to everyone here in the hall. I am Maggie from Phillips Town. Phillips Town, which is suffering too much because, because of the lack of jobs. Now I'm happy for internet when he comes in to help so that people can go very good on their long ways from to other, other places which are too far and safe. And internet is going to help in job creation, is going to help in the safety of the people. I could be happy if internet is going to courage the people around the Northern Cape. Because Northern Cape, I see it as the weakest problems. To help people according to the jobs, according to the safety, I don't see it. Now I could be happy when internet is starting up and do his job so that the people who are staying from far from here could be helped on their safety and the people of here to get jobs. We are scared today to courage children about education because we don't see nothing about education, there is nothing to happen. Now they are, are under way of take, talking about ages of the people. People who have worked hard to get education, to get skills, but today they talk about age. Now it is not nice because everybody who worked very hard for what he have or she have, he worked very hard for that, the thing have to help him in his life. Now I'm asking God to help Northern Cape because I'm Phillips Town person, but I did not stay here. But the things which I see here in the Northern Cape, I see them to drag people down. Now I'm asking God to came in the Northern Cape to help the people whilst they are hiring people. They have to got a certain way to hire people because there is a way to hire people which doesn't do anything to fight or what. When you say to the people, when is the way to, to hire? You can use yes or no, not to say you want to hire your friend or your children or your family. When you use yes or no, anybody is going to go there and try. And God, when he helps for him or her, things go well. People are not fighting against the unemployment or what because she knows that I didn't get uh, uh, an opportunity, but next time I will get. Now I'm asking Northern Cape to come and think for other people the way they need to be so that people are, can be helped and the thing when there is yes or no, things go very well. Everybody says it's not my turn now, other people got the opportunity. But next time I will get the opportunity and the people don't fight. I've seen that for many years.
Thank you.
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Goeie mooie dames en heren, ik is van Phillips Town en ik wil hierzo vandaag velen zeggen dat Phillips Town is bezig om te lijden, zwaar te krijgen, want die is niet werk niet. En ik is bij een blij voor die netwerk en ik wil hoop dat het mensen zal helpen, wat zal helpen met werk skippen en met die veiligheid van onze gemeenschap. Ik is bij een blij dat het kan helpen voor al jaren in Noordkap, wat ik zie als die zwakste provincie. Ik hoop dat het zijn werk doen, dat mensen van vaar kan komen in veilig reis. Maar ik wil noemen dat ik zo vaar niks nare gevoerd, waarin opvoeding niet. Dan wordt gepraat over ouderdomse perkens. Daar is mensen wat hard gewerkt heeft, hard gewerkt om zekere vaardigere op te doen. Maar nu zei ons, nee, jouw ouderdom is meer belangrijk. Help ons, help ons op die manier. Dus hoe kom ik nou hierzo is en ik, ik vraag voor God, ik zeg, ik zie dingen hier in Noordkap, ik zie hoe mensen afgetraakt worden. Ik vraag voor peter in dienstneemingswerk, uh, beginsels. Maak dit een ja neerding, niet dat het vrienden en familie is wat angesteld wordt niet. Maar dit is het lief, raarvaardig, dit allemaal kan proberen om aan ziekte doen voor werk. En dat mensen niet beklijnt niet, want hullen weer die process is raarvaardig. Ik vraag het hier in Noordkap, let ons mensen raarvaardig anteer, let ons makan help. Want dus is dit doen als het is raarvaardig is, als het is behulpzaam is, gaan daar niet beklijden, hij weet niet. Wees niet, want mensen gaan weten, ja, ik heb aan ziekte doen voor werk, ik heb het niet nou gekrijgen niet, maar het is raarvaardig en ik ga volgende keer weer proberen en dank volgende keer, gaan ik daar werk krijgen.
And the final speaker?
Goeie mooie, voorzitter en panel. Ik is Philan Prins, uh, van Phillips Town, Renosterberg. Ik zeg dankbaar, zeg dankje voor die geleentijd om vandaag te hier kan wesen en mijn stem te kan laten hoor. Ik is een borleng van Phillips Town en ik loop in de koer van waardheid en stress binnen mij, maar zal hem maar terug hou. Uh, die trabel is wat ons hebt in Phillips Town, uh, te. Die youthman in Phillips Town is raarvaardig, op die stadium, alles tot grond, dat kan ik maar zeggen. Daarom had ik het mag aang om van ochen uit te komen, die zestig kilometer af te lijden naar toe om net, et liest net een, ik weet of jullie weet waar is Phillips Town niet, is zo zestig kilometer hiervan daar. En als jij hiervan rijdt naar Phillips Town, dan rijdt je hier Phillips Town, ik mean, allemaal al gezien. En die feit dat je inkomend, nu lijkt het. Ik mean, ons het de premier, de man is zo, dokter is de man is zo. On het zeker ook een dokter Andrew Simpson, ah, zo wat die meier is. Maar ik weet hoe kan ons met zekke mensen in de municipaliteit aan gaan en die zien. Die municipaliteit gaat neer en zien. Daar is drie dorpen wat valen onder daarie, onderheime municipaliteit, Van der Kloof, Petersville en Phillips Town. Maar die brug loopt van Phillips Town af, Petersville en Van der Kloof, die twee dorpen wordt gebeneft, hullen krijgen alles. Die metrikke landen wat laatste jaar klaag gemaakt, is nou, zoals ik die praat, betrokken met onwettigheide. Ik zeg, nee, hij heeft een visie gehad, toen hij bezig was op school, maar nou iets klaar, is nou niks geworden. Die dorpe is feil. Ik praat die jousje wat ik praat hier, hij is feil, hij is versliet, dat kan ik maar zeggen. Kan je op een spook door wat eens, uh, opgezien de dorpe was. Nou, bestaat dat hier, hoe kan onze leiers die er die dorpe rijden is, praten van parlamentse mensen af, rij daar dieer, alle zien wat gebeurt, maar niet één doen iets om een beetje te komen zeggen, maar waar is die mensen van die dorpe niet? Oos kan niet aan elkaar, onder elkaar feiste rondzwaaien niet, ik mean, oos te gaven moet moes. Wat is beloopt, elke dorpe, elke plekje zal toegezien worden, dat zal omgezien worden aan zo'n plek. Ik vraag toch als het lief, als het toch hier, hullen kan, net de afvaardigings team naar die dorpe, kijk, wat gedaan van dat? Prat bae danke.
And I'm from Phillips Town and thank you for the opportunity to make my voice heard today. I'm standing in front of you, I just want to mention that I was-